Good morning. Happy to see you all. Just a little after nine o'clock, so I retired real late, just getting people in. I want to tell you the purpose of this meeting. First, I'll introduce myself. I'm Stephen McDonald. I'm the technical director of the Nevada State Board of Cosmetology. I'm the new guy. I've been here a little over three months. And I have a regulatory background. I used to be over OSHA, my safety workers comp for the state. I used to be a W state treasurer, so I handled a lot of money. And I'm also a lawyer. So I've done a lot of things over my thirty something year career. And I'm happy to be here and learning a great deal from you all, the licensees. I've restocked to the schools. Gone to half of them now. About eight, it was a little more than half. Also, I've been up to Reno to visit my staff up there. And also, I want to, first of all, say thank you to, I have two board members here. The board president, Grant Grimo, and also Molly O'Brien, our advanced aesthetician licensee. She's on the board, so I want to say thank you. Thank you for hiring me. But I wanted to put my hand out to you all, which you all know that I am not from the cosmetology industry. That's why I'm learning. And I also admire all of you. It takes talent to do what you do. I come from a more rigid type of regulatory background. OSHA is pretty rigid. You really don't want to deal with OSHA, right? Everybody heard of OSHA. And I used to be over that for the state. Workers' comp is pretty darn rigid. Now I have workers' comp coverage. It's pretty tough on that business. And of course, my safety active mind, so I know everybody goes that mind. I've done that before. It's fun stuff. So the purpose of this public hearing is to get comment on the regulations that staff has proposed to either get rid of or modify. It's very targeted. How many do we have? About thirty?
About thirty.
Thirty regulations, okay? This is pursuant to the governor's executive order that we must hold this public hearing. Okay? So it's not a board meeting. You know, as we don't have a quorum. There's only two board members here because they're so kind to show up. They don't have to, you know? It's not an official board meeting. It's a public comment. That's all we're getting from you is comment today. Staff is getting comments, so when you come up, you will log in or register with Lauren up here, a regulatory compliance specialist. And you will come up here and speak into this microphone. Okay? So that we can get your comments very clear. We can log who spoke, because this is part of our report that goes to the government. Okay? It's due May first. And that's pretty darn close to the end of the legislative session. So, but this is what mandated by us. We got to collect your comments, okay? Compile them. We present it to our board. And then we present that report. That's all it is, to the governor's office. This is what he's mandated as part of his executive order. All agencies have to do this, every one of them. You have a regulation, you must do what the governor has asked you to do. What you do, okay? So, so just make it clear, just a report. Who knows what's going to happen later on? Let's just report to him. Little ground rules, there's bathrooms out here, right? If you go out, so if you have to take a phone call, you can go out here into the courtyard here. But there's businesses over there, and you all are business people, right? We don't want to disrupt them. Okay? So if you want to take your phone call out there, you have to go out into the parking lot. This is a business that we ran, a CPA firm. CPA firms are pretty quiet, right? They're like law firms. So we don't want to disrupt them as well. So really, the business that's happening for us, we've only leased this areas here. Not least the hallways, we've not leased out there. So that's why they're very positive of their other fellow businesses. So you have comments in here? Please make them in here. Again, it's not going to be a back and forth. This is not a board meeting. It's public comment only. We will take them, take your concern, just take what you have to say. Okay? As I said before, we are transparent. Oh my God, this new guy in town. I am here to work with you all. I don't want to see you. I don't want to have to bring you before the board. I just want you to drink compliance. I want you to be successful. The schools are helping train people. The lawns are providing services to people like me. I love it. I get my little haircut done, you know? But I actually appreciate it more. I can tell you, I did talk to Cody. I'm amazed how talented you all are. And I take it for granted, as a customer, it takes a lot to do what you all do. And to get good at it, to get me to pay you money, right? To keep coming back to you. So I appreciate you all. I'm going to hand it off. Oh, good morning to you all up north in Reno. Is it cold up there?
It is a little cold up here, Stephen. Hello, everyone. I'm Erin Litter with the board, lead service specialist for Reno. We have about eight people here today, six people here today. So we will be doing the same process, as in public comment can be recorded from the north as well.
All right, thank you, Erin. And we'll be going back and forth, right, Lauren?
Yes, we'll be going back and forth. In order to make public comment, or to be included in the record, to be on our report to the governor, I have to have your full name, your email, and your telephone number. So please be prepared to provide that to me before you make your public comment. We'll be bouncing back and forth. And yeah, just looking forward to it. So welcome, everyone.
All right.
I just have a little short question. Last time we did the town hall media TV, oh, who liked the sound? And it couldn't play back to, is that going to be a problem this time?
No, that's why everyone that wants to speak will come up and speak directly in there.
They won't be walking around.
Yeah.
And we have a microphone there as well. Hopefully, our technical difficulties had been resolved the last time.
Yeah.
Because this is what we have to do, what the governor's ordered us to do. And we're going to make sure it's very clear what your comments are, clear on the record. We have your name, all the information that the governor wants. Okay? So we want to make sure we get it all. We want to do it right the first time, okay? And this is my first time with a public hearing with you all, right? I've done these before. This is my first time with you. So I want to do it right, and both of us together. So without further ado, I am going to hand it off to Jamie and Lauren to go through the regs.
Okay. Turn to the screen.
The regs proposed by staff to get rid of or modify.
Yeah. Okay. This is my second. Yeah, I have a presentation. There we go. Can everybody see this? Yes. So the first ones that we were going to list out for everyone are the ones that are suggested to be just modified. For anyone that's ever held a registration, so a threader, a makeup artist. If you purchase your threading or makeup artist registration on November 12th, it will still expire at the end of the year, making that $25 a waste. So we've proposed that instead of it just being for the period of one year, that it will be an expiration on the date of issuance. So everyone who gets a registration gets their full, full year. So that's the first modification we proposed. The second one pertains to apprenticeships. Initially, our regulations called for the board staff to approve or deny any apprenticeship application within thirty, thirty days. And we've reduced it down to ten business days. The next modification we've proposed discusses the regulation about restrictions on sharing of space between our licensees and licensees of other jurisdictions. So barbers, massage therapists. This is to make it a little simpler for anyone who might be dual licensed with another regulatory board, to make it a little easier for them to work in one space or a business owner who employs or rents to licensees or any kind of workers that don't necessarily just hold our licenses, just to make it a little simpler with having to keep them separated. These removals going, are these regulations going forward are all suggested to be removed. And they speak to apprenticeships only. This is the requirement for an apprentice to wear a badge. We don't provide that badge, so we don't see the need for them to have a badge. They are issued an apprenticeship license. So we'd like that removed. This regulation speaks to an electrologist apprentice. For some reason, electrologist apprenticeships have different rules than a regular apprenticeship, and we don't see the need for that to be done that way. So we're merging everything under one. And so that will be inclusive of this regulation down to this one. These all speak to an electrologist apprentice. So anything pertaining to electrology apprenticeships. Will now fall under the regular. Just the regular, regularship, or the regular regulations for an apprenticeship. Same for the badge. And then these are regulations that speak directly to schools of electrology. They also have their own regulations separate from a regular school of cosmetology. So we've proposed to remove them, and then they just are included in the regular regs for a school. So it'd be this reg inclusive of the next ones I'm going to scroll to. And these are all available in PDF form on, in our regular regulations on our website. But again, just, just for schools of electrology, they'll follow the same rules they've always followed. It'll just be under the guise of a normal school. We've also proposed to remove this regulation where, where the schools are required to provide drinking cups in facilities. And then that's it. That's what the staff has already proposed to be removed. And now we're ready for anyone to make their own comments about what they think could be either modified or removed and submitted to the governor's report. Anyone that wants to do that can just walk up and present their information to Lauren. We'll type it in, and then we'll take record of your comment. We'll bounce back and forth between us and the north. So if one of us wants to go first, and then someone from the north can go, that way we're taking equal amount of time hearing public comment. And this is going to be in regards to the governor's executive order.
Excuse me. Is it only applicable to what you've shown on the screen, or it can be?
Any regulation. This is just the groundwork we've already begun.
Lauren, Erin up here in Reno. We don't have anybody that is interested in making public comment at this time in the north.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
And if anyone else wants to make comments, if you want to speed up the process of jolted pipe, you guys can form a line.
Yeah, it's close to the speaker.
Okay.
Hello, my name is Valencia Birch, and my business is the nail industry. I'm a licensed nail technician, and I've been licensed probably for over twenty plus years. I wanted to speak to the provisional instructors license regulations. To my understanding, in September, I started looking to become an instructor. And I contacted the schools who had the programs. And to my understanding, I am not allowed to pursue an instructor's license unless the school has an opportunity for me to come in and train. Meaning, I would have to have, they would have to have, I think, economic resources to pay me under some circumstances, or they have to have enough students. And so I was denied the opportunity because of those, I'll call them, as far as I'm concerned, deficits within the school. So I felt I have to actually go to my competition and ask to be approved or to be trained as an instructor. So based on the regulations, when I read it, it just does not seem to be comprehensive enough to allow maybe online training, because the regulations only require, as far as training, that it teaches, how can I say? It teaches how to develop a lesson plan, or it teaches how to conduct training in the classroom. It has nothing to do with our technical training. So it just seems that a school, online or even an outside institution, should be able to provide that level of curriculum development, training for someone who is already in the business. So to me, it feels like there's a monopoly that the schools have. And so far, I mean, I was even accepted into a school that told me they would train me, and the next day sent me an email telling me I could not go further with the program because I was not willing to work for them for two years. I'm a licensed nail technician, and I've owned my business for many years here in town. But because I'm not willing to be an instructor at their school for a duration of, at least, like I said, this school told me, two years, they were not willing to train me. So I just think that we need to really look at this legislation because the monopoly that's being created prevents us from growing in our community. It prevents established and responsible nail technicians or cosmetologists or anyone from being able to expand their business opportunities because the monopoly is held by private and corporate schools. So I hope that we will take an opportunity to look at this legislation and open up more opportunities for people who want to expand their businesses. Thank you.
Erin, just want to check that you still have no one in the north that we can go to?
Not at the moment, Jamie, thank you.
My name's Eleanor Palmer. I'm an advanced aesthetic license holder, cosmetologist, and salon owner. Been in the industry for about thirty, forty years, licensed here in Nevada and also Arizona. I've been involved with this whole thing with SB 291 bill. We've been dealing with this for about eighteen months. There's a lot of questions I have. I did watch the last state board meeting in, in November, or I'm sorry, December. And so my questions were licensing last time was brought up. I pay a cosmetology license, I pay advanced aesthetic license, and I also pay a salon license. I feel like I'm being punished for being over-licensed. I think you guys were supposed to check into this last time. I don't think the board was ready for this new law that passed. And so for me, as a cosmetologist, I'm sure there's other people in my shoes that do everything. So I pay doubles. I wanted a question on that. Why do I have to pay the fees? And also, when we did pay the fees, we didn't get, even if we just had just did our license, there was no, oh, you just paid, let's give you a little credit towards your next license. No, you had to pay the whole license all over again. Not only that, I had to get a new license for my salon, since I'm advanced aesthetic license holder now. So there was fees that I thought was just kind of, you know, we could have worked on that a little bit better, as far as I was concerned, because being a person paying it, not fun to have to pay double of everything that everybody else does. On the board meeting for November, I was concerned because there was a woman asking about a grade of a machine. Nobody on the board had an answer for her. And being a laser certified tech since 2011, I felt, what is going on here? There was no answers. The girl went round and round about the grade, and she's been sent the SPACs. And the answer was, Madam President said, come give me a tummy treatment, and we'll figure it out. What? So I'm very concerned about that. So I just want to know on the board with this, who is qualified for this stuff? Like, I'm really concerned, because my concern is, I paid the money to go to school. I went to national laser. I paid the $10,000 to go to laser school years ago, and that was my choice. That was my other problem with this SB 291 bill, is that these girls didn't have a choice. These people did not have a choice. They had to do that to do a chemical pill or a hydrofossil. It was ridiculous. It was just really, I chose to take that on. I wanted to learn that, I did it. But these poor women now have jumped to these hoops, and now there's concerns about things being taken away, other board members getting involved with medical, and it's just really concerning. Because I feel like from the beginning, the board was ill-equipped to deal with what's going on right now. And I just feel like it's going to trickle down and trickle down and keep going until we put our foot down and say, hey, what is going on here? Because as a person being in this industry for thirty-four years, I feel that this is a travesty, that they did this to all these poor women in here and men that work in the industry. I feel like we were, you know, railroaded into this. And if they go and get the medical board, which is on this ballot, you guys, just so you know, this Matt Britton didn't stop. He's going to continue until he gets what he wants. So when he goes further and gets medical board involved, a statistician, or I'm sorry, dermatology, or plastic surgeons involved, they will do this. They will take it away from you, because they did it in California. So it's just a matter of time for them to start chipping away at it, okay? So just be aware of your industry and what's happening to you, because they will take it away from you. The people that just spent thousands of dollars to go to laser school now are going to be next year going, what? I don't have a laser certification? Somebody like me that paid $10,000, 2011, are going to be screwed. And you're going to become cheap labor for a doctor. That's what's going to happen. And they're not going to allow us to be independent people like me, who's been in the business for thirty-four years. I just want to live my best life. I went to school to do this. I love what I do. I can always just bear off and go back into hair, which I do still do everything. But I love the skin industry. I love making people feel good about themselves. And I hate the fact that we have to jump through these hoops when we already did this. This is ridiculous. They made us go to school for something we already know. And so doing the laser, if you want to do laser, more power to you. I have no problem with that. My problem is that they forced you to do this, and now they might be taking it away from you guys. Just keep your eyes and ears open and keep everything going, because this is happening right underneath your noses, just like the SB 291 did to us, and we were hit with it, and like, wow, what do we do now? So for somebody that's still on this, I work with Senator Buck. I'm always aware of what's going on. I keep my ear to the, you know, what's happening. And I will always fight and advocate for the women and men in this industry, because it's not fair. What's happening is just not a fair thing. And again, I'm really concerned with the board not having the information or the knowledge to even educate me. I can educate anybody on this board about laser. There's nobody on the board that's said it longer than me. As a matter of fact, the last state board, a person that came in and did my inspection, told me, you should run from the board. You have three licenses. You have a salon, you have a cosmetology, and you're advanced aesthetic. That's what she told me. I said, great, you know, I said, never thought about that. I was looking for the fairness of this. I wanted to go across the board for everybody to be treated fairly. And I feel like we've been taken through the mill with this whole thing, and now we're still going through it. So that was my concern. I do want the governor to really look at the board, and Sue is qualified for this. Like, there's no qualifications in my mind so far, after watching that last board meeting. I was real concerned. I said, wait a minute. The answer to me to that esthetician, you're not advanced aesthetic? The answer is no, you cannot do that treatment. But that's not what she got. She got a ten-minute runaround between the board, and then come give me a tummy treatment. What? I thought that, that is three things I can think about off the top of my head. Unethical, the girl's not licensed to even do that kind of treatment, and now you're taking her out of her salon to bring a machine to your board to do a tummy treatment. It's ridiculous. I just thought that was crazy. So again, I will, I hope the governor sees that there has to be some type of, something to be done here, because there's nobody that's educated enough to say, hey, this machine is this. And we're talking grades? Are we giving machines grades and giving them licenses? Are we giving the cosmetologists or the estheticians a license? I'm kind of confused on that. There seems to be some confusion. I felt you're advanced aesthetic licensed, you should be able to do the body treatment. You should be able to do laser under medical direction. That was never even brought up on the board. And I thought, wait a minute, am I going crazy here? Like, what's going on here? So my concern is that I do hope the governor actually looks at this and really kind of just goes through the board and says, who is qualified to tell you these things? Because talking to somebody that sells a laser, which was right up at the last town hall meeting, they talked to somebody that sold lasers. Well, if I sell $100,000 laser, I'll tell you whatever the heck you need to know to buy and sell this machine. You need to talk to people that are in the industry for a while, that have been in the grind of this and know what's going on. You guys are not talking to the right people, and clearly you don't have the right people on the board to give you the right answers. That's, that's just the bottom line. So hopefully, you guys are keeping aware of what's going on, because again, it's going to continue. It's not going to stop. Once they got their foot in the door with Matt Britton and Lang, with Senator Lang, they're going to pursue and pursue until they get what they want. And then they will take away it all, and then you guys will be working for a doctor for $15 an hour. That's what they're going to do to you. So just keep you guys, I just want to keep everybody aware of that. And again, I hope the governor really does look at this and really kind of audits the board and says, hey, what's going on here? There's something that needs to change. There's not enough education on the board for this. Nobody is qualified to talk about what they're doing. Thank you.
Erin, I just want to confirm again that there's no one in the north that wishes to speak at this time? Not at this time. Thank you.
I see my name in there. Okay. Good morning. Hi. My name is Sierra Wald. Does this say my phone number here? Oh, okay, thank gosh. My name's Sierra Wald. I've been in the industry. My name is Sierra Wald. I've been in the industry, really, I've been, I started as a makeup artist in 2014. I worked for Christian Dior. And then I pursued my license in Idaho. I got my, I worked for Bath House Spa, and now I'm currently a nursing student. And unfortunately, I saw in 2018, when I was licensed, deregulation is real, and people are really greedy. And unfortunately, we suffer. And I just really want everyone to realize, we all see what's going on. And I work across various industries. I'm a real estate agent here in the valley, and I actually also work in contracting and construction. So I'm really hands-on throughout an entire process for estheticians. I really believe in us. We go through a lot of hoops far as zoning and construction. And we pay a lot of money to install sinks. And I work with a plumber, it's 2,500 per sink, right? Because we can't have portable sinks, which is something that should be, maybe be amended. Because when you're first starting, you don't have a lot of money, right? And we, there's no grants. Our board doesn't give us any scholarships or help. Another thing that I'm really concerned about, a regulation that should be removed is like the statute for how many estheticians can be on the board. Right now, we have a lash tech representing us, which is great, but you don't do skin. So we don't have any representation. We don't have anyone passionate about our skin. And our skin is really the real issue here, right? Because your lasers don't go over your lashes. So I think it's interesting how we're talking about regulating electrolysis, right? When the electrolysis heats up the skin, it removes the hair. But if you want a fiber blast and tighten some skin naturally with a fiber blast on your skin, you need a doctor. If you want to get laser, you need a doctor. Well, one is removing hair, and one, laser doesn't permanently remove hair. It can still grow back. But I need a doctor for a laser, but not electrology. So that's kind of contradicting there. I think that's really concerning. So I think lasers should be removed. When I went to school, we did microcurrent, BT Micro was the distributor for us. I paid for BT Micro. They came and they showed us microcurrent technology. At the time, it was accredited. When I got licensed here, my license was good for all of those things. I did dermaplaning, I've done microderabrasion, certain types of chemical peels. All of those should be removed from this advanced aesthetics. What you guys are doing is allowing another industry to come, entire industry, a lawyer to play monopoly with estheticians, minority-owned businesses. I would say about eighty, ninety percent of us in here are all a minority, if not two forms of minorities, right? And we have the raiders come here, and by law, they have to give 25% of their business to minority-owned businesses, right? So why are we attacking minority-owned businesses? That's gatekeeping. Vegas is big on gatekeeping. I've been in a lot of industries, and it's like this to get in. And whenever we cause more regulations and make people go back to school, we are hurting our industry. There's not a lot of women here, because guess what? We take clients, that's how we make our money. I'm a nursing student, and let me tell you, I work at a hospital. The doctor is side doctor, doesn't even come to the hospital, and he prescribes medication. We got to stop putting medical people on a pedestal, because a lot of them work from remote. You want me to pay someone $1,000 a month to never come to my establishment? That is crazy. Doctors can write a prescription over the phone, they don't have to see you, right? Because we're in a shortage of doctors. Why are you going to force us to go up under doctors when everyone loves the industry, right? I'm in the industry. I work in a short-staffed hospital, and I can't even do aesthetics. Why? Because to go to nursing school, I got to work Monday through Friday for free at a hospital, and I can't work in aesthetics, but everyone is forcing me, pushing me, scaring me. But in real estate, it's illegal to scare people into an industry, because you guys keep boxing us in, boxing us in. And you know how much they're paying us on these thousand-dollar packages, $5,000 packages? $17. And if you go on Indeed, you can see, NEMA's certified. packages? $17. And if you go on Indeed, you can see NEMA certified only for certain jobs. That is steering in other industries. That's completely illegal and that's absurd. We should be auditing people who are taking money from our industry. We should be looking into how much are they profiting off of us if they want our money? We should be looking into that. There should be scholarships that be made. And I think that we really need to look at these schools that we're approving and say, are you an ethical business? Are you really standing for our estheticians? So I think this, uh, regulations that we need to have, um, just more discernment about who we allow into our industry and who were allowing to profit off of us. So.
Erin, just to confirm, no one in the north with a comment at this time?
Not at this time.
Thank you. You have three minutes.
Hello and good morning. I'm Countess Courtney. Um, I have been in the industry for over 20 years. Um, I am a currently a licensed instructor and also licensed advanced esthetician. And I would like to propose changes in the legislation to require an advanced esthetic, uh, esthetician be on the board along with a, I don't know, what would you call it now? Regular esthetician? Regular and advanced. I feel like you need at least both of those representatives on the board. Um, I would like to echo the, um, lovely, beautiful woman that came before us earlier and also request that there be specific guidelines and requirements out of these individuals. Um, not just being selected out of a hat by the governor. Um, I ran for the board. I obviously did not obtain the position, but I will continue because I would like to be a part of making sure that our people are safe and that everyone on the board making these decisions are well-educated and well-informed. As an educator, I've been in this industry providing adult education for seven years. And it's very important that everyone is making the decision, that they know why they're making the decision. And if you don't know, you shouldn't be making that decision. It is very clear as you look around, there's construction everywhere in this town, which means there's so much opportunity. But we really have to band together and make sure that our opportunities are not stolen from us. And we have to empower each other to take hold of our industry and make sure that other people, um, in other industries are not actually taking advantage of the situation right now. In this building, there is a place that is doing laser services that is not registered with the Board of Cosmetology in this same complex. Okay? So it's really knowledge is power is all I can stress to you guys. We need to have awareness and we need to have a bigger staff to be able to regulate these compliance issues. If you're supposed to be registered, we should have someone specifically assigned to making sure that everyone who has a laser is registered with this board. Where is that officer at? Where is that person assigned specifically to going and checking on these doctors' offices? Thank you.
Uh, Erin, anyone in the north at this time?
Not at the moment.
Thank you.
Uh, my name is Tony Robinson. I'm now an advanced licensed esthetician by force. Um, laser was never anything I had an interest in. Still do not. Um, as a widowed retired woman, to have to go into my savings to pay thousands of dollars for something that I never wanted to do, was never roundtabled about, questioned on or informed about, I feel that needs to change. Um, everybody is able to get in contact with the schools. Obviously, we're all licensed in Nevada. Yet a law slipped past us that was trying to be introduced here for years and years that everybody slept on until it got through. And then we know the monopoly because it was only one school that was prepared. So we know where the false information came from. Also, I think you don't have to roundtable everyone, but why not send select information out to the teachers where they can actually get in contact with the students? Roundtable with the people that are actually doing the work and get their input. Rather than let someone come in that spilled a lie stating that we are wounding people, that we are hurting people, which is why our insurance is so high, yet it was never proven. So when these meetings took place, my question is, who had the authority to actually fact-check this person with the information that was provided rather than just running with what a school that had nothing but profits to make off of our backs? So again, where's the process that comes in? When somebody comes in, makes a blanket statement about something that we do as big as wounding people, burning people, hurting people, where is the evidence? Because we should have the opportunity to get feedback on that and have proof on that. So that is something that also needs to change. The people that are involved need to be giving the input rather than somebody slithering here that has nothing but money to make off of our backs and benefit off of that.
Erin, anyone from the north?
Not right now, Jamie. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Tilda. I'm an instructor, um, and advanced aesthetic, um, licensedee. Um, so my concern was, um, we, me as a, I went to school to, um, get my PIL, uh, here in Nevada. And, um, now that I, I've offered the advanced course, um, I see a lot of, um, like other people, uh, teaching the course also that are not, um, instructors. It takes a lot to develop a course. It takes, uh, it, it's not just, hey, I'm going to teach you how to do this. It's not. You have to develop a course aligned. You have to, um, um, you know, uh, be on your students, um, um, know how to make a lesson plan. No. And that's what they teach us in, uh, PILs, you know? So, uh, my, my suggestion is that if we're going to continue this, if it continues, um, that they have to get their advanced license, that it should be instructors, um, if you're a licensed instructor, to be able to teach this course because, um, and that you have the experience of knowing not only laser. I mean, because if you're allowing them to get, uh, an advanced license on the other scopes of practice, then they should be able to learn that also, not just why only laser? Like, okay, can I, I take a laser course, but yeah, I can do all these other treatments that maybe I'm, don't know how to do, but you know, do them. Um, so that's my, uh, suggestion for that. The second one is, um, the lash extension industry. I'm, I've been doing lashes for a long time now and, um, it's not regulated at all. Um, we have a lot of people, a lot of techs, um, getting certifications um, that are not licensed. And, um, we all know this, um, here in Las Vegas, we have a lot of that going on and trainers training, um, people that are not licensed or, um, um, people that have gotten certifications and don't know that they have to be licensed. And then they get in trouble with the board. Why don't we find a way to get them to get licensed or to get, um, um, if they already have a certification, give them that, um, um, change that. Um, how do I want to say? That, that pass for them to be able to get licensed if they're already certified. So, um, those are my suggestions because I do have a lot of, I have, um, I offer lash courses and I always ask, do you have your license? And they're like, oh, no, I didn't know I had to have a license. Or I only have a, you know, I want to get certified with my, well, you have to have a license. Oh, but I can't afford to go to school. Already took a course. Somebody already trained me. And now I found out that I got, I'm got, I'm getting, uh, notice from the board saying, hey, I'm going to get fined because I never knew or nobody ever disclosed to me that I needed a license. So, um, I think that we need to have a more, a way of keeping of, of getting them to be able to become compliant and, um, help that industry. Okay?
Erin, anyone in the north?
Not right now. Thank you, Jamie.
You have three minutes.
Hi, I'm Courtney Stewart. Um, I'm here to address the 75-hour laser course. Um, what concerns me is I've been in, I've been doing, um, laser, um, aesthetics for 18 years. Um, there are no curriculum or guidelines for this program. So these courses that are being taught, I agree the instructor thing, but also the experience. You know, I'm seeing these people have girls learning on handheld devices and misinformation and coming from a laser background, that scares me. That's there. Lasers can be very, very dangerous. And the worst part is the misinformation. If you didn't know, it would just, you know, but the fact is the misinformation being provided by these courses because there's no curriculum, no guidelines. I actually developed a curriculum, submitted to the board and it was approved. What was on that curriculum? Didn't see the curriculum. It was an outline. It was just, this is the chapter. This is, and so the, I could have put anything in those chapters. I didn't know, you know, I thought my information from medical professionals. I've been doing this for so long. Uh, but the, the, the current instructors teaching, yeah, are, are not instructors. And I do think that's important, but what should trump that is experience and their background in that. And, and what kind of lasers they're using, there is a difference. There's a difference between the laser you can get on eBay and get here. That's not a, a main name. There's all kinds of different grades of lasers. And I don't think any of that was taken into consideration due to, you know, the, the person um, who we, who kind of pushed this whole bill through had financial gain from this happening. And, um, that should have kind of all been addressed then. But I guess from here on out, I, I'd like to see the courses paused. All of it paused as the governor said it should be. Um, it's just not safe in misinformation. It scares me for the, for our licenses in general. I also worked in California a little bit and they can't do laser there. Um, and the doctors don't like that. So the medical board, there's a group that will always want to come in and take that, but the plastic surgeons I work with, they don't want to take that away from us. They don't want to pay our ends to do it. So our fight really needs to be within educating ourselves. But if we come out burning people because they've taken these courses that were taught on handheld device, an esthetician who has never actually done laser, that's going to be a problem. The medical board will take it away. That's when it becomes a problem, like the wounding and the things that were being told before, that will happen because of this misinformation, I believe. So I would like to see that pause pretty quick. I think that the, the further along this gets, the more people spend money, these girls, I taught, taught the course and it was heartbreaking to see people come in and they're like, I just want to do my facials, but I want to do micro, microderabrasion. I couldn't teach microderabrasion. There was no guidelines. There was no curriculum provided to me at all. Just submit it. Great. I was glad that I knew what I was talking about, but that took me over a year to develop that course. To your point, it is not something that you can just develop and submit and it shouldn't be that way. There should be a course or curriculum developed by experts hired by the board, not people who have financial gain, but people who are just experts in the field. That's all.
Reno, anyone from the north for comment?
No comments.
Thank you.
You have three minutes.
Three minutes. Okay. Let's see if I can do this in three minutes. Was not planning to come up here. I'm Sherry Petroni. I own a spa as well as I'm a licensed esthetician. Took my course in 2006 and I've taken so many advanced classes that were not from instructors because the people that are in our industry do know what they're doing. So as a, um, an master's degree licensed educator in the state of Nevada who hasn't taught in the schools for a long time, it disappoints me that I cannot somehow get an instructor's license with my education as a teacher as well as my, um, experience since 2006. So that's just a side note. I'm really wanting to talk about SB 291 as a basic esthetician. I find that very insulting. I found, find that really, really, when I was told I was grandfathered in, as long as I took an advanced course that took away a lot of what I do regularly in my treatment room is absurd. Uh, I had a certificate of completion, of course, because that's what you got in lasers in 2007. I worked at a facility that did IPL. I hated it. I am not going to pay anybody for money to do that again. I am not going to do it. I, and I, and I, again, I find it insulting, very disrespectful to us as an industry and we are not being treated as credible professionals as women and whatever other background we have. This is just ridiculous. I know there are some men in here and I do appreciate that as well. I know, um, so here's my thing. At the very least, as a basic esthetician, we should be able to keep the things that we were already doing ahead of time. I, I didn't, I just didn't go to be grandfathered in, which really is you lose everything unless you take another, uh, advanced course that you don't want. I did ask last March, I think it was when we had the town hall. So do you mean that you're going to review all these things you're taking away? No, no. I've been to Canada twice to take advanced microcurrent. Can't use it in my treatment room anymore. I'm 57 years old. I'm not going to go back to spend as much money as it took me to cut, to get the license in the first place to do something I won't do. Um, as far as electrolysis, I didn't think about this, but think, my machines, most of them you can get on Amazon. Galvanic, the microdermabrasion, I actually have one that's more advanced, but LED chemical peels. I just don't see how that could be. So when we, I came last March, there was a girl that had just come out of school. She was devastated. She's quit. She's no longer going to, because she had just come out of the basic. No one told her that she could stay and get the advanced. She's now no longer an esthetician. And so she's working for $15 an hour at, um, a medical facility just because as, you know, whatever she's doing. I don't know exactly, but my point is, can we please take a look at this SB 291? And at the very least, give us what we already were trained to do for the, and two, medical and basic. I mean, you know, I'm sorry, but basic to me was just really an insult for somebody that takes great pride in having a place that, uh, has 15 people that I teach them how to be entrepreneurs. They're not anything but renters and that's what I do with them, to be able to empower women, not take stuff away. Thank you.
Reno, comments from the north, Jamie? Does anyone else want to make a comment?
Go ahead and.
Um, I'll make a comment after, um, this person. Yeah, sure. Thank you for coming. And I'll speak to, uh, SB 291.
Hi, my name is Nancy Peppers. And one of the NRS regulations that says hand sanitizers and gloves are not acceptable substitute for hand washing, but we can't have portable sinks. I believe we should have a secondary sink because the law says your dispensary sink has to be permanently plugged. It says nothing about a secondary. It says nothing about a secondary sink. And after COVID, we all need to be able for our clients to come in and even wash their hands. So my dispensary sink is actually downstairs. I work on the second floor. I leave my room, I open the door, I'm holding a bowl of water that I've got to take downstairs. Walk through a lobby, and then I have to touch another door. I have to go down twenty-six steps, holding the handrail. I'm always supposed to. Go through another lobby, down a hall, punch in the code for my dispensary room, because we have to have a lock. Do you remember what I have to do in the sink? Wash my hands. Now what? Touch the doorknob, go down the hallway, hold the handrail all the way up, open the door, go through a lobby, open another door, back to my clients. My hands are dirty. Do I do it all over again? But yet gloves and hand sanitizers, it's not an acceptable substitute? I believe I should be able to have a portable sink upstairs. And I think every esthetician should have either a sink or a portable sink in their room. Because look what we went through with COVID. And I actually called state board and someone, I'm not going to name who, said, yes, I could. And I'm going, hmm, I'm going to double check that. I did, I got not just a no, but a Nancy, no! And I'm like, oh, okay, Janie. And it's just like, and I'm like, huh. Okay, so where is the, I could get a yes at state board, I can get a no at state board, I can get a yes at state board, a no at state board. I could really easily go, okay, fine, oh, she said yes, I'm going to go get one. I didn't, I double checked. But OSHA regulations, what's the ones for hand washing? You, when you go to a restaurant, they have to have a hand washing station there. With nothing in the way of them going to what they're doing to wash their hands. There can't be a door there, there can't be any barriers. Doctors are allowed to use portable sinks. What are we doing? We're that close from, well, I work with doctors, they can have a portable sink in their room, but I have to walk all the way downstairs and all the way back? I believe we should be able to have portable sinks. That's my thoughts, thank you.
Erin, anyone in the north?
Not at the moment.
Good morning, everyone. I am a Las Vegas esthetician, a licensed aesthetics instructor, and now a licensed advanced esthetician. I just wanted to step up, I started seeing some faces that I've seen over the years. And I just wanted to kind of second the notion with a couple of things that were heard earlier this morning. As an instructor, I think it's very important that um when we're moving into advanced aesthetic, if that is the route that we're going to take, that we do have an advanced esthetician on the board. There are a lot of ins and outs, and dos and don'ts that you don't know unless your hands are in it in the field. It's not something you can learn from reading the book, you need to have the experience behind you. So if we look at it like something like the P I L that we were looking at earlier, maybe it's someone who has three years of experience, verifiable experience in the industry, you know, um so that they can get on the board and make sure that these regulations kind of make sense for us. The other thing that I wanted to speak to was, those of us that were involved in the conversation before SB two ninety-one hit the books, we know that what was um told to us was that nothing would come from a regular esthetician. There would be no restrictions held, nothing would be taken away from the licensees, and that's just not what we're seeing. Pointly period, right? We've seen the organic, we've seen LED, you know, things that we've we've had our hands on for years and years and years. So I think the conversation does need to be had, there does need to be revision. And uh we need to really see where this is going so that we're not crippling the business.
I'm going to speak, and then we'll take her comment, but um. Hello, everybody. SB two ninety-one. It's been a wonderful, wonderful experience, and a good deal that uh was passed last session. They had unintended consequences, as we hear. Yes, I will admit, because I'm the one in the captain's chairs now, captain's chair now, I'm Captain Kirk, that yes, things didn't happen the right way, the process wasn't perfect. I'll admit that because I'm here now. And so I'm going to ensure that it's done the correct way, the right way. That's why we had a hearing on January sixth to go over the statute, to clean up what happened before. And it went through the board and the board voted on it, and the public had comment at that hearing, because I was there. Then it goes to the legislature. It doesn't go around the industry, and it doesn't go around the board, and you get a legislator to sponsor it. That's not the proper way, because you're the experts. The board is licensed as well, they're the experts, and staff are the experts. It went around everybody. So that's the way it's supposed to work, that's the process. It's supposed to have staff work with the industry, industry and staff get together, it goes to the board to vote on it. They get a public hearing, and then it goes to the legislature to be considered. That's the way the last proposed bill has gone this time. It went to the industry, they had a public hearing, the board voted on it, had your time to comment on it. And now, from that town hall meeting you guys had, that five and a half hours that I got to watch, one of the first things I did was watch, I go legislative hearings, that's my job, right? Find out what happened before, let's not do it again, let's do it right, let's get the industry to to tell us. And guess what? We heard you. What's being proposed and what was approved by the board at the last January sixth meeting was those things that were taken out under SB two ninety-one for the estheticians is being proposed to put back in. We're moving it back into the basic esthetician license, the scope of practice. It was taken out, that was an unintended consequence, that's what we're trying to fix. We heard you all, okay? So it's there for them to consider, it's with the legislature. They have it. Okay, so so we 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 would, I'm here now, I'm trying to fix it, that's all, that's all I can do now. The law is a law, SB two ninety-one was passed, my job is to try to fix it for you, trying to fix it back.
Who's helping write that? Is it going to happen again, and the experts are the experts?
Yeah, well.
Because of course, I'm not known with friends, it's just not what, you know, they aren't experts on those advanced.
I I know disrespect to the legislature, they're not experts either.
Right, exactly.
They're elected, right, we're a citizen legislature, so you get people up there that are mom and pop shops, sandwich shops, and they're writing laws for you, right, on everything, schools, roads, you name it, right? So um they're already elected though, we got to work with them, you got to educate them, right? So maybe you guys can educate, if you feel that we're not as knowledgeable as we should be, let's work together and make it better, that's what I'm here to do, okay? My door is open. My first thing I did was go to the schools, because they are on the front lines teaching the people that are getting licensed. Without you all being licensed, guess what? We don't exist as a regulator, right? I've said that to Cody, I said to everybody, if you're not licensed, we don't exist. So I appreciate you all, I appreciate what you do. The key is, though, we got to work together to fix it, right? Isn't that all what we want? It's what happened last time, to make it better, to make it better. I don't want to see you all out of business, no, you got a business. I'm not in business, it doesn't make no sense to me to make it hard for you to get into business. Let's do something about it. My door is open. You know, we'll we'll consider any comments, or we're taking them, anything you have, I'm taking notes. We're going to compile all this, we're going to look at them seriously, we're going to bring it before the board and see what we can do, right? The key is to get you to stay in business, to make it as easy as possible, right? Within the law. Because the policy of the state is set by law and by the board. You know, I can't change it, the law's a law, right? Unfortunately, SB two ninety-one is the law. But now we're trying to go back and we and fix it, and that call, that's right. When I talk to the legislators, I don't say lobby them, because I would be violating the law, I can't lobby. But what I will tell you is that they are very supportive of fixing the unintended, that's the word I always use, unintended consequences of what happened last time. And that's what we're going to do, okay? So there will be a hearing, I don't know when it's going to be, but the legislature has it, okay? So we'll get there together, yeah.
I just have one more regulation I wanted to mention to be redacted, is that all right?
Yeah, absolutely, why not? So really, honestly, my hand is out to you all, because I know I've been hearing all this SB two ninety-one, I've gotten a handful of it, trust me, over the last three months. And we're trying to fix it, that's why I changed the process, I got input from you all, I got it before the board, you had input then at a public hearing, they voted on it, and now it's over there. Now we got to educate them, right? That's what we got to do, but that's how it's supposed to work, it didn't happen that way last time. It did not go through here, it did not go through you guys, it went around.
I think the frustration was when we did sit with Landry and we had the meeting online, we were told at one point, if you don't like it, don't relicense.
Oh.
Really?
Yeah.
How smart is that for the board to tell us that?
Sure, let me.
They said, we're not here for you, I'm sorry, we're not here for you, we're here for the public.
Let me put this on the record at a public hearing.
Oh, that Landry told us, you didn't.
I'm not, I'll never say, I'm not going to speak to my predecessor, I will never say that to you.
Right, well, I'm just saying, this is where the frustration comes from, as as somebody in the industry, we were told that, I'm like, what? Like I said, when I watched the board and talked about five hours, I've done this for eighteen months. I've seen every board meeting, if I am not on it live, because I do public business, I will watch it later. And when I sit there in frustration, it's frustrating when they were going over ten minutes with this param machine, are you kidding me? I go, the answer is no, in oh, and then when they were sitting there going round and round, come give me a tongue, are you kidding me? I I just, if I should have reached the screen and yelled, I would have, it was that frustrating, so I get it, I get what you're saying.
Let me tell you that, yeah, I appreciate your your frustration, guess what, I'm not here to, I'm not here to. I'm not here to frustrate you all, I'm here to work with you all, okay? I'm here for you, my door is open, my cards are right there on that desk, because I work for you too, okay?
Thank you. Um my name's Sierra Wolf, um and I just also wanted to ask for the part of the regulation of SB two ninety-one for us to be grandfathered in, I think they should extend the timeline while we're figuring through this mess. It should not be October twenty twenty-three. I think right now it should be kind of left open indefinitely, if you already have your license, it's not fair, because I'm in school right now as a nursing student. Nursing is actually one of the hardest degrees to even become licensed, so I can further my education. So for people who have kids or don't have the money, um I think we should just leave it open indefinitely, because if I don't go to school by October twenty twenty-three and I have to pay another five thousand dollars, when I'm already paying forty thousand dollars plus for my education, um I think that it it should just be left open indefinitely, because if not, then you have to redo your entire nine hundred hours and then pay all your fees over, which is absurd. Because it's like, if 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 there is something that says, hey, we don't care about you, that's it. Or somebody who's already been licensed in the industry for over ten years, um I think that should be redacted. Um and then also, as well as, um I forgot what I was going to say, but that, yeah, that was my main one, is just extending the timeline. Oh, and then also, um just, I I hope that, just like coming up here, it's really sad to me that we've been pleading for over a year. I haven't been here in some time because of school, but the last meeting I was at was a town hall meeting. And it was just so heartbreaking, because so many of us came, we filled the seats. And then because not enough board members showed up, they actually invalidated our meeting. So I just really want you guys to be aware that, like, it just feels like we've been manipulated so many ways, and it really brings me to tears, like, because there's been times where we've just broke down crying, you know, over this stuff. And I want everyone to really realize just like what they're doing to us, because it's, this is extortion, like, in real time. And it's like, we're all up here like, please, don't do this to us, please, don't do this to us. And it's like, if our begging and pleading is like not hurting, like, it's like, do you want us to get on our knees and cry in front of you guys? Like, because it's really heartbreaking to watch us all, adults, professionals, business owners, having to come up here and like beg for our industry to like leave us alone and let us do what we're doing. Because, yeah, you can go to Walmart, you can go to uh Amazon and get all our devices for fifty, sixty bucks, eighty bucks, some of them not even real grade, and you can do it yourself. And it's like, now you're taking them from us, that's absurd. So I just wanted to put that out there and leave it at that.
Erin, anyone from the north?
No, not right now, thank you, Janie.
All right, um I want to thank you all for uh this comment session. I still have my back, my shield, it's all good, it's all good. The the the, and I I don't want you to feel frustrated about that last town town hall.
Yeah.
It's because it.
That was intentional.
Yeah, yeah, there is no.
We don't have a forum, we can't go back and forth like we're doing right now. Okay. Question and answers, when we have a forum, it's a very regimented agenda, and it's dictated by law that we have to do things a specific way. And it kind of puts it um in a situation where only the board members can speak unless it's those two public comments before and after. So when we hold meetings like this, and there's only our our two board members here, it's intentional to allow the room to go back and forth.
Yeah, as well as because it's the open meeting law, O M L, right? Our deputy A G is right here to make sure we don't violate that. Uh so that's why we don't have a forum, if we had a forum, we'd have to follow all those laws, right? And this is not for that, the governor did not want a board meeting, he wanted just an open comment session, okay? So um, hey, I hear you, I'm listening to you, and uh we 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 will get it right. Our job is to get it right this time, right? So let's, we're working hard for you, okay? My, the board members here, working hard, they make me work hard, no, very good. But I'm here for you all, my door is open, give me comments, please, let us know, we're here to listen.
Uh I get very emotional, so I'm going to email my comment. Uh when is the last, uh what's the deadline to your comments today?
Uh yes, it is, we can get to it today, it'd be great.
I'm going to, but I want to make sure my other students can support it.
Sure, thank you so much, oh, you have another comment?
Just one last um comment, um thing that I remembered. Um I was looking into opening up a aesthetics academy, just for aesthetics, aesthetic school. Um like again, I said, mentioned trying to um get a lot of like lash um lash technician or certified lash uh people to um be able to get that gateway or that path to becoming estheticians. Um or um, do you know, just the aesthetic school? And I saw a lot of the regulations were kind of like cosmetology school. Um I was just suggesting, I don't know why um they require a three thousand five hundred square foot uh place. And I don't want to teach, I don't want to have forty students, I don't want to have fifty or a hundred or, I want to just be able to provide courses to like five to ten students, a private school, something small, but I'm required to have a big place, I even rented a location and everything. I actually lost a lot of money because then I was looking at the regulations and they'd say, oh, no, you have to have three thousand five hundred square feet, whether it's one student or twenty students. So um I was proposing, um suggesting, why is that on the regulations? And also um to provide my financial statements, um to be able to open an academy. It's uh uh, of course, you have to have a capital, it's a business, we all know that, we're all in business. Um but um, when when you're starting off, it makes it kind of hard to be able to start off if, you know, they're requiring to have, you have all this, you know, capital. So that was just one of my suggestions. And then another one was um the online um training, um to be able to do it hybrid. We do, we. We do, we have a lot of our students as instructors that we, you know, taught at the school, they do it online, of course, they're there submitting, um, how, what would be the best way for us to track their hours when they're doing it online. So that's all. Thank you.
Erin, anyone from the north? No, Janie, we don't have any comment.
Thank you.
Okay, do we have anything else?
Anyone else?
All right, again, I want to thank you all. I appreciate your comments. Um, as I said before, our door is open. Definitely grab my card, grab, grab Janie's card. Um, we can, Lawrence, we can definitely, um.
Go ahead.
Okay, I'm closing, wrapping that, wrapping that up.
I want to share that I have not received until today, since last March, this was the first thing I was, and I didn't know if they were talking about SB two ninety-one or whatever. So I signed up for, you know, I want to get my information, I still, I've done it several times on the website, because when we were here a year ago, it were taped, we were told there was no way to send an email to every one of us, there isn't any of that um, capability within the state board of Cosmetology. I found that curious, because today's day and age, it's probably could be done. So two-fold, is there a way that we could, I'm just saying for everyone, we would love to have the information. I'm here, I have a couple of estheticians in, in my practice, and they want, they are working today, and so I'm sort of here on their behalf, and they said, we would love to have the information to know ahead of time, so that we would, and I get it. The, the, the board is, the, the meetings are on, on the page. Uh, but it would be nice to have that reminder, you know, there's so much coming at us all the time. It would be really nice. Secondly, um, could you give us a suggestion? So what can we do to make sure the legislators know that we're, you know, I mean, I obviously, they probably know because of the tone, but, you know, is there something we can do, a certain person we can send something to, or? You know, I think it would help if they, but letters.
Well, there are two suggestions. One, you can get it to us as staff, that's our job, because I'm dealing with the legislature, that's my job, right? I'm the one that's to fly up, miss flights, fight the lady, come home to my family late. It's not great, but it's part of my job, that's what I have to do. The other thing is attract the hearings, uh, the legislature, they're public, they're open, you can watch them, so you know, sometimes I'm watching them from down here, hopefully, sometimes I'll have to fly up, I have to go through the snow. That was fun. I'm to Reno, driving down to Carson City, you know, my flight was late getting up there to Reno, my flight was late coming back home. Uh, it was a wonderful long day, sitting in the airport working, but that's what I'm paid to do, right? I work for you. So my job, as the board has directed me to do, is to fix what happened before, and that's what we're doing. A lot of these, these regs, and there's a regulation, right, hearing, you know, everybody knows statutes are different than regulations, right? Of course you do, because you're smarter than me, is that the regs, uh, we're trying to clean that up as well, because a lot of them are just redundant and don't make any sense. As, as Janie went through earlier, an electrologist apprentice, well, you know, we have an apprentice general statute, I mean, a general reg. They all have to follow them. Why does it be copied in different sections? It makes the thing longer, it doesn't make any sense. So that's what we're trying to do, is clean it up. Clean it up for you, better understanding, but also it makes it easier for us to regulate, right? Make, it just cleans things up. And so that's, that's another thing that I hope to bring to the board, is to clean up what we're doing. So, and to do it better, more efficiently, not being burdensome. I'm on the same page as you, okay? So, um, I want to thank you all again. I appreciate taking time out of your busy day, your business people, making, get out there and make that money. And um, I'll talk to you soon, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you. Also transparency, we're trying to communicate more with you, we'll work on that email stuff. I know sometimes it works, sometimes it doesn't. We'll work on getting that fixed, okay? We want to communicate with you, let you know, we're here. Or, or one of our, our, our president wants to speak.
I, I just want to say to those who want to follow the regulations, is to make sure that you find the hearings and attend those meetings. Because you're talking to the, the assembly and the senate that pass those, those laws and pass those bills. You can speak. You could actually go up to the government center of Washington, you don't have to go to Carson City. You can find the regulations when they're talking about cosmetology, and anything that impact our industry. I've done it multiple times, and you can go before them and speak so that they can hear your voice. Because a lot of times people are passing bills and are introducing bills that we don't know that they're introducing, and then we have to try to go back and try to clean those bills up, but if they heard from you as a licensee, it would make things a lot stronger for the whole cosmetology industry. So it takes all of us as licensees to make sure our voices are heard.
Thank you all, appreciate it.